I one please.
I one, resolution by principal sponsor Alderperson David Bogdala, lead cosponsor Alderperson Peterson, cosponsor Alderperson Lamachia, Ruffalo, Wilson, Maholski, Rose, Pazala, to update the city of Kenosha's snow removal guidelines, including providing for snow fleet equipment review and updating the city's salting process during a full plow run.
Gentlemen from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve item I one as presented by the principal sponsor.
A little Lamachia has got something to say.
Is there a second?
I second that, Lamachia.
Thank you, sir. Gentleman from the fifth.
Thank you, sir. Alder Bogdala, you can echo my statements on this one. We got some emails from some city employees that think that we don't appreciate what they're doing. Please tell them, and I will tell them, this has nothing to do with the work they're doing, that they are doing. We have the utmost respect for our plow drivers. I couldn't do what they're doing. We all got the same emails stating that they feel like we're tearing them down. We are not tearing them down. We just want to revisit something that has been in place since two thousand and six. Correct, Alderperson the seventeenth?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you, because we do appreciate what the plow drivers are doing. They do a phenomenal job. It's the direction that they're given that we need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman from the third, and then the gentleman from the sixteenth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to echo what Alderperson Lamachia has said, but I'd also like to state, nobody has an issue with the prioritizing main drags and bus routes and areas around schools, et cetera. We do have to look again at how soon and how, in what manner side streets are being done, alleys, et cetera, and getting, you know, no emergencies, how to deal with the cars, et cetera. This is just, this is not recommending the specific action. It's recommending a review of the policies, review of the equipment, and it will come back to us afterwards, after a review is made and conclusions are brought to us. And thus, this is not in any way, shape, or form a negative thing about the plow drivers, who I agree have been doing a stellar job. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman from the sixteenth.
Yes. No, I was a field employee for We Energies for forty-one years, so I know all about working in the field and all kinds of weather and all kinds of hours. So my hat, my hat's off to the snowplow drivers, you know. They work sixteen hours a day. You know, they don't know if it's gonna snow Sunday, or it's gonna come in on Sunday and Monday and Tuesday, have to do with sixteen, so I know all about working in the field. My other point is, you know, this isn't nineteen fifty anymore. It's two thousand, it's two thousand twenty-one, you know. People are more mobile, you know. Back in the fifties, there was one car, you know, one car garage, one person had a car. Well, now, you know, now families have two or three cars, you know. Every, everybody of driving age almost, almost has a car, so that, there's more cars on the road, so people expect more, you know. The citizens of Kenosha expect their toilets to flush, their garbage to pick up, and their snow to be plowed on their streets in a timely fashion, a timely fashion, you know. We need to, we certainly need to pass this resolution, but we also need to look at moving some equipment to the west. Either park a snowplow and some equipment at the airport, or the fire station by the airport, or have some kind of agreement with the county. You know, I've been told, well, we can't do that. Well, how come we can't do that? I haven't had a, nobody ever really gave me a good reason why we can't park a plower too, or a dump truck, or some, some equipment that we need to plow parts of the west, the interstate, and even all the way up to Whitecaps, you know, that's, there are buildings on Highway forty-five and Highway fifty. I don't know why we can't park any equipment there. So we need to look at that at the same time. So I highly recommend that this resolution be passed. I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody, but it needs to be revisited, you know. I had a lot of complaints, a lot, a lot of complaints. I even had, I had two complaints I just passed, passed snowstorm. It was from a different area. So now we got an email that we could email the Snow Command, and my hat's off, because that works. I emailed them, and they got back to me in a timely fashion, so I really appreciate that. So the staff is, is really listening to us. So, but this resolution is highly important, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Counsel President.
Gentleman from the tenth. Gentleman from the tenth.
It would be my recommendation, based on the comments I heard, that we strike the first, be it for further resolve, and the second, be it further resolved. If this isn't truly about studying what's going on, and the Alderperson of the third district said there'd be no changes, those two pieces implement a change. So if we're gonna study what should be done, and then dictate what should be done now, then those two seem to be in conflict on the intent of this resolution. So that, and just for everyone to understand what I'm talking about, be it further resolved, the Common Council for the City of Kenosha requests the inclusion of changes to where salt is applied in the snow removal guidelines to minimally include, quote, "all city streets during any snowfall over four inches when road, the road condition becomes, quote, 'hard-packed,' when temperatures fall or will fall creating unsafe road conditions," end quote. Then the next one says that the Common Council therefore, be it further resolved that the Common Council of the City of Kenosha hereby directs the city administrator to implement, hereby directs the city administrator to implement, emphasis is mine, the changes to the snow removal guidelines immediately upon the updated snow removal guidelines to the Public Works Committee. So I'm a little confused here.
Is that, is that a question, gentlemen?
I will put that question, I'll put that in the form of a question.
Thank you, sir.
Why was tainting my right to speak after?
Yes, sir, absolutely. To answer your question, why is it in there? It's in there because, yes, this resolution is asking for revisiting of the policy and many of the things that were brought up by the previous speakers, but also recognizing that we also would like to see, as part of that, changes in the salting process that we're doing. Nothing would, and when you, the second whereas that you were referring to, nothing would be, come forward until after the study is done, until after any recommendations come forward, and the snow policy comes before the Public Works Committee, which it already does now. Every year, we review the snow policy and basically approve it, and most of those are very, very minor changes. So none of that would, would actually go into place until the Public Works Committee sees those recommendations and approves the snow removal guidelines by that committee.
So based upon your further explanation, I thank you for it. The two be it further resolves that I have an issue with are superficial?
No, it's, it's what the, I can speak for myself as the sponsor, as well as the cosponsors would like to see come out of this. Yes, we are also asking for specific changes. There are some things that we will learn as the city administrator, if this is passed, will learn and make recommendations. This is one we would like to see included.
So if a study is put across, and it's decided that we should change the policy, and this change does not include these, this particular provision, then the policy has to include this particular provision?
No, that's one we would like to see added. I would say, again, speaking only for myself.
I don't, okay. And I, again, I definitely appreciate you explaining it to me, but I'm sorry, I do not read it this way. I do not read it the way you are explaining it.
Nothing changes until, if it's, if it's, if it's the language that you're looking at, if it's we need to add more equipment, if it's we need to add, as the gentleman from the sixteenth said, we need to have a location out on the west side for additional vehicles, none of that changes until the snow policy guidelines come before the Public Works Committee, and they are approved by the Public Works Committee, as they are every year.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try this one more time. Request the inclusion of the various information about salt, right? Request that. Then you're gonna direct the city administrator to implement the changes of the snow removal guideline, which is going to include what you want, and that your request were in reference to salting city streets. But if the guidelines come back and don't include that, that it's in violation of this resolution, if it passes tonight, I think we're gonna struggle.
Go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
I'm listening.
Oh, we are saying that's what we would like to see minimally. We would like to see language included to add that. If the city administrator and administration would like to see something above and beyond, I, at least, again, speaking only for myself, I would welcome that.
Okay. I thank you for taking the time to explain it to me. I disagree. I think it states it. I'm not convinced that it doesn't state that it must be in there, and if it's not in there, then I think that's gonna be a problem with this resolution. That's, that's my first problem. I definitely thank you for taking the time to walk me through it. I wanna thank the Alderpersons who have spoken in defense of our personnel. One of my problems with this was, I'm always gonna be support, I'm always gonna support process improvement. I will always support us looking at how things are done and seeing if we can improve on those. But I also think that when it comes to strategy and tactics, we set the strategy. We set the vision for what snow removal should be. Those people who we've empowered to, to respond to our strategic vision, this is what we empower them to do. Our Director of Public Works, our whole snow removal operation team, et cetera. And I often think that if we are only looking at policy and how to do things, that's great. I absolutely, absolutely think it's absolutely wrong that we can, we can now email the Snow Commander in the middle of the snowstorm. We empowered that position to make decisions, and to have seventeen of us coming at that person while they're in the middle, in the trenches, while they're responding, I think is a bad idea. I talked to a constituent in our city, and the person made the comment, "I barely made it to work. I barely made it to work." My question was, "Did you make it to work?" "Yes, but I barely made it to work." When, and when calling some of my fellow colleagues in reference to this, they responded to, "Things need to be better out west. Things need to be better out west." I wanna know how much more proportionally in taxes do some of our residents proportionally now pay in reference to, let's say, residents of the tenth district. I don't believe proportionally they pay anymore. I think when the tax levy goes through, I don't think it's differentiated district by district. Now, we can talk about more tax dollars are paid because the value of houses might be more in some areas versus others, but proportionally, I don't believe there's any place in the, in the city that pays proportionally more taxes than others, and thus deserves proportionally more response than others. I think crisis is an absolutely wrong time to look at policy and procedure. I think reacting is absolutely the wrong thing to do. And I, I can count, I see how many sponsors are on here. This thing's gonna pass, whether I support it or not. But I think sometimes our job as Alderpersons is not just to hear our, someone's complaint, but to give them the foundation of how those complaints, or, or what the foundation is about the policy and procedure that's being implemented. Now, if we're talking about looking at some traffic counts, those kinds of things, and see if there's some areas that have, experiencing more traffic, and they maybe should be a secondary road, and they're not, I, I, I'm, I can support that. But the undertone that I'm hearing on this is bothering the hell out of me. And the undertone I'm hearing is, "We deserve more services out here." Person I spoke to talked about coming from Chicago. I come from Chicago. Okay. There's a reason why you don't live in Illinois anymore and came to our great state and our great city. And I don't think comparing the operations that happen in Chicago in reference to snow removal is apple and oranges when it comes to Operation Snow Removal versus the City of Kenosha. It snows in Wisconsin in the wintertime. And I know we've had a couple of nice winters where we thought it was never gonna snow again, but it happens. Our response is varied from, from each snowstorm. And we understood that. Now, I didn't vote for this improvement in two thousand sixteen, but it is now what it is, and we, and I've adhered to it since. But when I have people telling me things like, "My street didn't get plowed till late February, January thirty-first," well, that's, we had an amazing snow event. When I looked around on Monday the first, I was very impressed with the way the city looked. Last night, I had someone, I was responding to a constituent who said he was told that the alleys were gonna be plowed in the morning. But that's a really hard thing to do when in the morning we're still snowing, and we're still trying to keep main roads passable. And our alley response is one of the last responses that we do. Our job is not only to facilitate the concerns of our constituents, but our job is also to talk to our constituents so they know that this isn't happening willy-nilly. There is a plan in place, and that we are working the plan. I'm not gonna be in support of tonight's resolution. If there's a motion to remove those two pieces that I have problems with, I would vote for it. I'm not trying to horse trade here. I just have a serious problem with those two be further resolved. I'll make the motion to amend this resolution by removing those two.
Second.
That's, that's.
And I'll speak in the moment.
It's been moved in second to, can you, can you be more specific with your?
Yep.
Motion, gentlemen?
Yep, it is my, it's my motion to remove, to be it further resolved that the Common Council for the City of Kenosha requests the inclusion of changes to remove that, be it further resolved, and be it further resolved, the Common Council of the City of Kenosha hereby directs the city administrator to implement the changes to the snow removal guidelines immediately upon approval of the updated snow removal guidelines.
Okay. Gentleman from the first, did you understand the motion?
I did, sir. I'll just say, generally speaking, I'm, I'm in support of the intent of the, the resolution. The four inches and the requirements based on that, and someone could please mute their phone, I appreciate it. The four inches and the requirement is relatively arbitrary, so is the hard pack. Some of you may remember back when we were reviewing our current, our current snow policy, I distributed some information that essentially looked at the, the variability in, in snow density based on inch accumulation. It was about a twenty-fold throughout the United States. It's easily a ten-fold around here, so we could have, you know, one inch of very, very slushy snow, followed by a very hard freeze, in which you might wanna do a full plow run, or do some other type of mitigation to keep the streets safe, or you could have a very fluffy four-inch of snow with a, with a, with a very, very warm condition the following day, and you might, you might basically operate completely different. So to me, it's really about some guidelines that basically give administration and the people that have the authority and the visibility to actually understand what it is to keep our streets safe and clear, and allow them and afford them the opportunity to exercise that discretion in the most, the most efficient manner. We, we right now have people, I get emails, or somebody say, we have emails that come to us due to the two-inch rule, and it, and I think people are responding to it as a rule versus guidelines. And I think the four inches of snow and, 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 you know, forcing possibly, or at least interpretation of somebody forcing that we're gonna lay down a certain amount of salt, I ain't even talking about how much salt we lay down, you know, on whatever the metric might be, somebody pounds per mile, or pounds per cubic foot, or whatever else. I think it's extremely arbitrary. I won't support it with, with, with that in, in it, but I certainly support, support the intent of the resolution as far as the study and coming forward with, with guidelines, a recommendation for guidelines that help us make the city safer, more efficiently cleared, particularly for emergency equipment. I get calls, by the way, about snow removal. The first thing I ask, of course, is a matter of public safety. Is, is there a condition where a emergency vehicle cannot get through the neighborhoods to tend to people that have emergency service requirements? That's number one. But of course, the inconvenience, you know, falls somewhere second to that. So I would support the resolution if it did not include the specificity that was identified by the Alderperson of the tenth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Any from the fourth?
Yep, that's me. Listen, I just have a, a question. Is Director of Public Works on the line?
Ms. Billingsley?
Yes, I am here. Okay, true of the chair, to Director of Public Works. I'm not sure I heard this at one point recently, but are there snowplows on order right now?
We have thirteen that are on order. That's what I had heard. And when were those ordered? They were ordered, I wanna say, right after budget last year.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That answers my question. Mr. Chair, my question would be the date here to have this review done by August. I have some concern, that may be too late, in case we need actual changes or more equipment. You know, it could snow in November, for God's sakes. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if you have any reservation that that might be too.
No, and I, and I appreciate the question. That was, the discussion that I had with administration, my initial date, I, I share your concerns, was, was much earlier. However, in, in discussions with them, if this was approved, they had requested additional time because there is, this is gonna be a more in-depth review, in particular on the equipment side. And so having that information, and, and consultation with the administration, that's where we got the current date that we have in the resolution now.
Okay, all right. Well, I don't know. Personally, I feel that that, that might be too late, but, um, not my thought. So, um, thank you.
There is, yeah, point order. I, I think we have to stay on the deferral, don't we?
Technically, you are correct, sir.
Or the amendment, I'm sorry, amended version.
Sorry, yep.
Lady from the fourth, you still have the floor?
That's right. I, I'm done, and I apologize for the air.
No, no problem. I would just, I'm gonna, gentleman from the fourteenth, I'm gonna virtually pass the gavel to you.
All right, I have it.
I would just say that, and I'm opposed to the amendment that's on the floor. In particular, the second whereas that was, that was asked to be, to be removed. If we're gonna make any of these changes that potentially come forward from, from the administration, they need to be put in after the, into the new snow removal guidelines. And as, as the lady from the fourth just pointed out, we need to have that done, and we need to get that going, so that we're ready. And again, as she stated, in particular, as it relates, maybe not necessarily equipment, but any operational changes that maybe come out of that need to immediately go into the snow removal guidelines. One for, for training purposes, if there are changes to the maps, if there are changes to, to where and how we, we salt, all that needs to be put in place. So that's why these things need to be, need to be approved as, as it relates to that. So I'll save the rest of my comments after the amendment, but I just wanna say, as, as the sponsor, I'm vehemently opposed to the amendment that's on the floor.
Your Honor, this is, Your Honor, this is the second Alderperson for the first. I, I would be happy with just deleting the four-inch, therefore be it resolved. I don't disagree with you. I, but, but this is right now the only motion I was able to second. If the maker of the motion would be willing to retract and recraft his amendment to basically only address, therefore be it resolved, that addresses the, or the, the guidelines for four inches of snow and hard pack, I'd be willing to retract my motion and second that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Given your explanation, I, and given the second further explanation, I would like to amend my motion that it just removes the be it further resolved that the Common Council requests the inclusion of changes where the salt is applied. Okay?
Okay. Let's, let's do this. We have a motion on the floor already, if, if the,
I'm gonna ask.
I'm accepting the friendly amendment. I'm accepting the friendly amendment, Mr. Chair.
Understood, but I believe we have a motion on the floor that belongs to the body, so I would, I would ask if those who are, like to have a new motion.
I'll retract my second.
The motion belongs to the body. Let's, let's take care of the motion that's on the floor right now. Are there, and then we will, if, if that motion passes, or, excuse me, is fails, we will come back, and I will go to the gentleman in the tenth for an additional amendment.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak currently that's on the motion on the floor, which is to strike the two paragraphs, the two whereas? Hearing none, motion for us to strike the two paragraphs. We're gonna do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, nice, hey.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hey, motion carries. Gentleman from the tenth.
Thank you for the, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion that the one, be it further resolved, starting with that, the Common Council for the City of Kenosha requests the inclusion of changes, ending with the and, be struck from this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
That gentleman from the first, is that you?
Yes, sir. Gentleman from the first, thank you.
Okay. Gentleman from the tenth, you have the floor?
Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Counsel President.
Anyone on the motion? Again, I, I'm, I'm gonna, and I, I appreciate the, the motion, but I, again, I, we need to address the salting piece. When I drive around this city, not just in my district, I drive around this city, the amount of salt and how we do it, in particular in these events where, such as we've had here recently, where streets don't get plowed, or they don't get plowed for an extended period of time, and become hard-packed, there needs to be language incorporated into our snow policy that addresses that issue. I believe it so strongly that it's why it was included in this resolution. Again, this is, this is minimally. If the city administrator comes back with some other language, that's something that the Public Works Committee will review and, and will deal with at, at that point in time, whether it's in August, or hopefully sometime sooner. So I would not be in support of removing that language. I think it makes a statement that we need to, we need to include that. We need to address how and where we're salting. And I'll, I'll speak to, after the, this motion, I'll speak on, on many. that for the, this motion, I'll speak on, on many of the other items and why this is important, but at this time, I wouldn't su- I wouldn't support the motion on the floor. Anyone else? Hearing none, motion on the floor is to amend, strike the be it further resolved, uh, all city streets during snowplow event four inches be removed. Um, do we need to do a roll call? Do a roll call.
Older person, Hoggard?
Aye.
Older person, Seal?
Aye.
Older person, Maholski?
Aye.
Older person, Kangas?
Aye.
Older person, Lamachia?
Nay.
Older person, Pfaff?
Aye.
Older person, Griffin?
Aye.
Older person, Fox? Older person, Kennedy?
Aye.
Older person, Pazala?
Nay.
Older person, Peterson?
Nay.
Older person, Wilson?
Nay.
Older person, Przansky?
Nay.
Older person, Rose?
Eh.
Older person, Ruffalo?
Nay.
Older person, Bogdala?
Nay.
Three, four, eight, seven, eight, nays. Eight, Fox, um, um- Gentlemen, gentlemen from the eighth, are you there? Uh, yes, the mo- the motion on force to strike that language, did you hear all that discussion, gentlemen?
Yes.
Uh, your, your vote, sir, on the amendment?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, nay.
Nine nays.
Nine to-
Seven.
Seven. Motion fails. Any further discussion? Gentlemen from the fourteenth, I'm virtually passing the gavel again? Uh, just a couple of things. First and, uh, first thing is, I, uh, Alderman Rosenberg could not be here this evening. Uh, he did reach out to me to tell me he couldn't be here, but wanted to be added as a co-sponsor, so I'd like the clerk, please reflect the gentleman from the ninth as a, as a co-sponsor. Um, to that end, um, I wanna thank all of my co-sponsors, uh, in particular, our lead co-sponsor, Chairman of Public Works, Alderman Peterson. Um, he and I had many discussions about this, um, this issue, um, back and forth, and I wanna thank him for a prompt review, uh, as Public Works Committee. Also wanna thank all of my co-sponsors. Um, I think one thing I heard here tonight is something about, you know, the west side, and while I always advocate for the west side, um, this issue, if you look at the co-sponsors, we have the south side, we got the north side, we got the central city, um, this, this is not a, this is not a west side issue, this is an all city issue. Um, and I think it speaks to the co-sponsors that we have here, um, and why this issue needs to be addressed. Um, this is, this, this council is, is charged with setting policy, no different than any other policy that we review. Um, this is a policy that needs to be updated. Um, I also think that this is something, uh, uh, gentleman from the eleventh, and he, actually he and I talked, uh, we think this sort of in-depth review should probably be something that happens on a more frequent basis. As I said, the last in-depth review we did was back in 2016, um, and I think some of the things that we've, we've all experienced here recently, um, something that need to be addressed even, even sooner than, than what we're doing now. What we're here now, um, we have it in front of us, um, I don't think the, there was a comment made about address or reacting in the midst of a crisis. Um, unfortunately, uh, we had somewhat of a crisis. That's what, we need, we need to react, we need to act, we need to do something about it. That's what our constituents expect of us. Expect of us, when we see problems and we see issues that are impacting the entire city, we need to react. I'm not gonna sit and tell them, well, I know it's just, it's just snow and I know it was an issue, so come back and talk to me in, in, in August and I'll, I'll try to see if I figure it out when it's a better time. Now's the time. We need to address this issue. I, as I said, the night after the, the first blizzard that we had, I'm tired of talking about this. I know that some of you are probably tired of hearing me talk about it. I know some of staff were tired of hearing me talk about it. But it's an issue and we're not taking care of the basic fundamentals that this city is charged with. This is one of those issues. Um, was brought up about the, the email, um, that now was, was just recently created? That's a great thing. I applaud the Public Works Director for bringing that forward because when we do have issues, I expect, I expect an answer. Because I'm only asking you because I'm getting asked by my constituents, in particular in the midst of a, of a blizzard and a crisis, I get back to you tomorrow, I'll get back to you in a couple of days. No, you wanna know now. So this was, this was one thing that, that was brought forward that, again, I used it. Um, I don't, my colleague from the sixteenth used it. I, I think it's a great thing and we, it doesn't get lost. Somebody's on vacation, somebody going home sick, it all goes to one box. I think that's a great thing. I'm happy for that improvement. Some, it was also said, well, I didn't get to, I didn't get to work, uh, till later. I had people that didn't get to work at all because they were completely snowed in. That's un- that's unacceptable. Completely unacceptable. If somebody please mute their phone, whoever banging around in their kitchen, it's very disrespectful. This issue needs to be addressed because people, you know, whether it's Sunday or whether it's in the middle of the day, as I said a couple of weeks ago, when they introduced this resolution, had this, that storm hit twenty-four hours later, you bet we'd have had a major crisis on our hands because nobody would have been able to get to work. So it needs to be addressed. The last thing I'm gonna add is on this, the city employee issue, the plow driver issue. First of all, I got those two emails and I responded to those two individuals and I shared with the gentleman from the tenth, my responses to those individuals. Nobody here can say that they have ever heard Alderman Bogdala ever, ever denigrate a plow driver. In fact, when I brought this resolution forward, I was very clear, you can criticize the policy all day long, but you don't criticize the people, the men and women who are doing the job. Very specific about that. I've done interviews on the radio talking about this issue. Said the same thing, you can talk bad about the policy, it needs to be changed, but you don't talk badly about the men and women that are out there in the middle of the night plowing our streets. That's off, that's off limits. Now, you wanna talk about the leadership? That's on the table. That's their job. They're supposed to take, take that heat. They're supposed to take the hard questions. They're supposed to answer the tough questions. That's what we get paid for to do. So yes, I will criticize leadership when I think they're making the wrong decision, but I'm not gonna criticize the men and women doing, plowing, plowing the streets and never have and never will. And anybody that says that is not telling the truth. So I'm not sure where that started, um, or who started that, but the facts show different. And I'm, that's, I'm glad these meetings are recorded so I could share that information with those two individuals. I haven't heard back. Hopefully that satisfied their, their request. We need this resolution, we need this study done, we need to start doing a better job, um, where and when we salt, where and when we plow, um, how much equipment is dedicated in various parts of the city, how we address when we've had multiple snow event after snow event and we're not going back and cleaning up, when it gets freezing cold and we have stuff that happens, we need to react to that. When there's more snow down here by the lake, because we've had lake effect and there's less out on the west side, we need to react, we need to react promptly. All that needs to be taken into consideration because we cannot have another situation like we had a couple of weeks ago. So I'm very thankful to the co-sponsors, I'm very thankful to the administration for their support, in particular, City Administrator Morrissey. I wanna thank him for, uh, for him and his leadership and what's gonna happen, and I'm very, I'm very much looking forward to seeing what comes out of it. But as I wanna say this ve- very clear again, just doing this and passing this resolution doesn't mean that we have a, a, a pass to our constituents to say, well, hey, we passed this resolution at council, they're gonna come back with us, uh, and give us some recommendations. So if you couldn't get out of your house and your street didn't get plowed for a day or two, well, don't worry, there's a resolution. Abs- we need to make sure that things are being taken care of now. It's one of the fundamental parts of running this city, is making sure our streets are taken care of. So again, I wanna thank everybody for their support. I ask for your, uh, support on this resolution and I look forward to, uh, the results after it's all said and done. With that, I'll take the gavel back from you, gentleman from the fourteenth.
Uh, gentleman from the fourteenth has a, a question, 'cause I, if you, it's my turn, I wanna, I wanna jump in.
I believe, there's, I don't have anybody right this second, so the floor is person-
Uh, my, my question is, in 2016, when we revisited the policy from who knows when that was updated from, but in 2016, did the recommendations come to council and did the council then approve those changes? If you remember, sir.
My, my recollection was it was, it was, it was a specific change that was from the four inch to two inch. We passed that, uh, and then they have, the language was very similar, it was almost identical to what's in here right now, which is the guidelines, uh, were put into the snow removal policy and then it came to the Public Works Committee.
But I think it came to council as, 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 as well. I think it, I think we had that policy change come to council and I think maybe if, if I would make a suggestion that, that this, any, any sort of policy changes that we make with this is vetted through Public Works, but then comes to council for final approval. Especially if it, um, of, of, you know, a larger aspect, I think that, um, that would probably be an appropriate path and that's just, just my, my opinion.
I, I would be more than, more than happy, I'd, I believe it as, also should, should go to your committee as well, Mr. Chairman, uh, as there may be some financial implications that I think need to be vetted by your committee as well, I'd be more than happy to, uh, have additional, whether it's finance and council, I, I'm more than happy to support that.
Do we need to make that change in this, uh, in, in this resolution?
I, I would say it's, it, it would be up to the body. I, again, I would, I would not be opposed to, to add that language.
Yeah, and I, I would just, I would just, um, look, yes, as the maker of the, of this proposed resolution, as the author, um, if you can see where you think we should put that in to make it, um, and it's, it's, it's nothing to usurp any power of public works, it's just that, I think that, um, to make that policy truly the city's policy would be just much better for it to at least come to the, come to the full council for a vote, when the final version is ready to go.
I, I would be second to last whereas, I'd be, I'd be agreeable to adding finance committee and common council.
Perfect, um, so, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, to add that language right where you indicated.
All the members of the-
And I don't think I need to, sir, I don't think I need to go on anymore about it. Um, I said enough, so, um, hopefully it passes and I think it would be a, a good pass. So thank you.
Good. Motion on the floor is to add the finance committee and common council to the second to the last paragraph after Public Works Committee. Question on the motion? Hearing none, um, I think we can do a voice vote on this. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Back to the original, uh, item.
Older person, Griffin?
Lady from the seventh. Yes, ma'am.
So, my question is, um, what timeframe are we looking at to have concrete changes recommended?
The resolution calls for the, the report on or before August. Uh, again, my, my hope, I think with, as the lady from the fourth indicated, I, hopefully we have that sooner.
I agree with sooner as well.
You still have the floor, ma'am?
That, that's my recommendation too, is to have the, to have it sooner than August.
Okay. Is there anything else? Anything else, ma'am?
No.
Okay.
My thought.
Gentleman from, gentleman from the eleventh.
Yeah, I agree, uh, this wasn't designed to go after the snowplow drivers, uh, this isn't going to help the snowplow drivers because my complaint was about parked cars. And today I had a constituent add to that, what I would say, say was parked cars, he said that, why are we having garbage pick up on a snow emergency? Well, he's kinda right because you're putting the garbage bins out in the street and he claimed that there was a couple of them that was hit by the snowplows, which I probably see that. I really don't understand why they don't have reflectors on those garbage bins so they aren't getting hit by cars or trucks. But that's something to be considered into this too, is about the garbage pickup on, uh, crisis day or snow emergency day. I yield.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Older person, Griffin, again.
Lady from the seventh.
Another concern is, there are many, um, during the snow emergencies, no one can park on the street and there are many people who have garages that are in the alley for the entrance. So when we are only saving the alleyways for last, there are still many people who can't get out because the alleys aren't done either and their cars are stuck in their garages. So that's a thought when we make recommendations as well, of the process of when the alleys should be done and what areas people, all of the driveways are in the alley. Thank you.
Thank you, that, that is the, that is the intent to review all of them. Anyone else? Hearing none? Uh, I think we, do we need a motion to approve as amended? I believe so. Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Still motion to approve as amended.
Mr. Council President, Mr. Council President.
Gentlemen from the tenth.
Thank you. While, again, I'm going to state that crisis is not a time to make policy. Despite your soliloquy, I disagree. And if this policy is in place now that we're react, we are using to react to snowstorms, if the policy was okay in 2017, and okay in 2018, and okay in 2019, and okay in 2020, then what factor changes except for, we got a crap load of snow in a very short period of time? It snows in Wisconsin. And due to lake effect and a couple of other factors, we can get a lot of snow- And due to lake effect and a couple of other factors, we can get a lot of snow in a short period of time. I don't see the need for this particular resolution if it's a matter of the, um, what happened the last weekend in January to first day in February. I just, I'm, I'm sorry, you have not convinced me that this is necessary. We have to determine what is the responsibility of our, um, snow response. Constant process improvement, I'm all for it, say, you know, always, if we can find efficiencies, let's look for those efficiencies, if there's things that aren't working, let's look for those. But again, the, the undercurrent, the tone in which we are doing this, I think is absolutely wrong. And I think it's because some of you can't handle a little bit of heat. That's it. That what I said? It is, it is a matter of us explaining to our constituents what the plan is, how the plan is being worked. What deviation from the plan happened in the last two major snow events? What street did not get plowed for a couple of days, as was referenced in your rather long speech? What didn't happen that should have happened? I know this is gonna pass, and I'm gonna save the time of the council for the, the rest of my comments. I'd ask my council members, that again, reacting, being reactionary is not the best place to be when we're trying to talk about policy and procedures and those kinds of things. What really happened in these last two snowstorms? Our city stayed open. No one died, no one got a lack, no one didn't have a lack of emergency response.
Excuse me? Please mute your phone, if, I mean, please mute your phone if you're not speaking, the gentleman from the tenth has the floor.
What really happened in these last two snow events?
Give your husband something else to do.
Everyone?
Council President, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, older man from the sixteenth.
Gentleman from the sixteen.
Twenty sixteen was five years ago, uh, how many of our employees retired since then? Um, how many, how many trucks, uh, that we, that we don't have that we had in twenty sixteen? Uh, the snowstorm we had wa- wa- was a major stormstorm, nothing unusual, it happens every five or six years. So, the last one showed us that, uh, we need some tweaking, we need some, uh, something different, you know, like I said, uh, before, if nothing changes, nothing changes. Um, it, I, I don't think it's reactionary at all, I, I think it's just, uh, looking at it, um, because, uh, things change in the last five years, uh, the population of Kenosha grew, and it grew west, uh, Mr. Kennedy, uh, mainly, mainly west, uh, you know, Kenosha took over a lot of areas that used to be Bristol, uh, Paris, Summers, you know, the, the growth is west, and pretty soon it's gonna be in the downtown area. But, but for now, it's, uh, it's west, so, uh, we have to look at that, uh, and we have to, uh, make, uh, all citizens in Kenosha feel, uh, feel like they're getting a, a fair shake, so. That's my spiel, thanks.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Alderman from the third, I will be brief. Uh, and, and, and great, uh, admiration for the gentleman from the tenth. Um, I, I, I kind of disagree with, uh, him as far as the reactionary, uh, thing and, and re- responding to an emergency. This resolution calls for, uh, recommendation no later than August. Well, by the time April and May come around, while this is being studied, there isn't going to be any, uh, emergency reaction. Hopefully, the people who will be making the recommend, the recommended changes will soberly look at the situation, and not in a reactionary way, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Anyone else?
Yeah. I mean, Pazala.
Yep, gentleman from the eleven.
I look at it as, we should always do this, is, is like, I drove a truck for forty-five years, and I inspected my trucks, and I did things I needed to do ahead of time, it's called preventative maintenance. So we're doing this, looking at things how they work now, how they look, how they work in the future, that's called preventative maintenance, and that's why we put these rules in effect, so we know ahead of time, not, not the time it's happening, but in ahead of time, we learn by our mistakes too. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir, anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none, motion on the floor is approval as amended. That's for, uh, roll call, please.
Older person Hogard.
Aye.
Older person Seal.
Aye.
Older person Maholski.
Aye.
Older person Kangas.
Aye.
Older person Lamakia. Older person from the fifth, Mr. Lamakia. Star six to unmute.
Come back to him.
Older person Pfaff.
Aye.
Older person Griffin.
Aye.
Older person Fox.
Aye.
Older person Kennedy.
No.
Older person Pazala.
Aye.
Older person Peterson.
Aye.
Older person Wilson.
Aye.
Older person Przansky.
Aye.
Older person Rose.
Aye.
Older person Ruffalo.
Aye.
Older person Bogdala.
Aye. Gentleman from the fifth, are you there?
Yes, I am, I apologize, I don't know how you got to mute, uh, aye.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Motion passing, yes, sir, we got you. Motion passes.